Uh, the meeting. Planning and zoning commission, um, it's a special meeting uh on August ninth. Uh, twenty twenty-three. We're uh running a little bit uh behind time, but um. Uh, we now have uh. Uh, as much time as we're comfortable with uh to um uh talk about um. Um, the zoning text amendment uh for the complete rewrite of uh. Zoning regulations and the map amendment for complete rezoning uh of the entire city. And uh, this is a, this will begin as a presentation. Uh, by the staff of the new proposed zoning map. Um, Steve, can we do a roll call?
Certainly, um, Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron. Mr. Bryce.
Present.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Muschak.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Ms. Tabachnik.
Here.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
And Mr. Shawman.
Here. Um, uh, Steve, I'm gonna suggest um you just introduce uh the staff members. Who were here with us this evening.
Sure, so uh obviously you know um Mr. Baker. Um, and I believe Mary Beth Chacy, who is still on, she's hiding, she's back.
Right.
She was, she was working with Alexis pretty closely on the, the aquifer item. Um, and that is a, there's a lot of inspecting for the city, so it was kind of getting her feet wet with some different things, so she's here. Listening in on some of your discussion tonight.
Good, and what about Ray?
Ray was from the last application and I turned his camera off, so he, he is not with us tonight now.
Oh, okay.
Welcome to sit and listen in, but he's not participating in this conversation.
Our cameras are blocked, by the way. It says they're blocked by you, just to let you know.
Yeah, you, you, you can feel free to, um, we'll move you over to an attendee, but your, yeah, that your portion of the evening is concluded. Okay, um, I think probably the easiest thing to do is, so we sent out the memo. Uh, hopefully you guys had a chance to go through that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. We're not voting on anything this evening, so nobody needs to be seated. This is just um our own uh in- internal conversation. Okay, I, I apologize for interrupting.
No problem at all. Um, so we had sent out a memo, um, I believe Monday went out, kind of. The, the map was released about a week ago, so we wanted just to give you a little bit of context as to uh. Why the changes for those different areas um remained and why, you know, that why they were uh recommended to be. Left alone as part of the upzoning, uh, so that that went out. Uh, hopefully that was somewhat clear. I'm sure there are going to be some questions on certain parts of that, so we're happy to. Address any of those questions you might have. Um, I did, as a, you know, matter of uh extra due diligence, go back out and look at all those areas again. Uh, and there was, you know, two areas that kind of struck me as areas maybe um. One, in particular, off of Bowton Street. Um, you know, a lot of the, the, you know, a lot of the conversations that we had at the last meeting centered on, uh, you know. The road adequacy of some of the, the properties and, and is that an issue and, and how does that, you know, factor into the upzoning? Um, for the most part, the, the road networks are all for pretty, you know, pretty good shape while, while there is on-street parking and I was there. In the evening, so this would have been hopefully when a lot of people were actually home from work. Uh, so there is, you know, there's a lot of areas where there is on-street parking, but a lot of those. Properties, you know, probably, you, you could definitely tell the difference between some of the older homes and some of the newer homes. Where some of the older homes, they, you know, some of them barely have driveways and some of them barely have, you know. Parking spaces off the property, so I think that's a significant factor as to why there is some of the on-street parking that you're seeing. Whereas anything that's constructed, um, whether it's to the current zoning regulations or to the proposed zoning regulations. Is going to have to have compliant parking in terms of the number of spaces uh in terms of the location of those spaces as well as the. Proper backup, so you know, you don't want somebody, you know, some of the side streets is not really an issue, but in certain areas, you don't really want people backing directly out into the street. It's much more difficult to navigate traffic um going in reverse as it is, uh, you know, facing forward. But the area down um off of uh lower Bowton Street, which is one of the probably the southernmost area identified as potential upzoning. That street itself, it's kind of dead ends and. There's really no outlet or access point out of there, and the width of the pavement itself. I would say it's, it's more descriptive of a generous driveway than it is an actual street. It's really narrow. It, I mean, I, I, I don't even know there are spots you can actually get. Two cars side by side as opposed to all the other roads I went on, which all had, you know. When there was cars on the street, obviously, somebody sometimes had to pause and wait and let, you know, let somebody maneuver around. But that street in particular, I don't think two cars can actually fit side by side, or they're gonna. They may be bumping mirrors if they're getting close enough, so that, that's one area I would, you know, maybe think about. Pulling out of the upzoning altogether. Um, but it overall, yeah, thanks, Brian. Yeah, very good, yeah, down in Robbins and, and Rorden down there, right off the sou- the southern piece of Bowton. Um, which is just super narrow, even though there's a, a bunch of, you know, there is some multifamily and two-family in that area now. That those particular streets are just, you know, they're old, old streets and they don't really uh. Don't, definitely don't comply with anything, so that was like the one kind of area that really jumped out at me from my observations yesterday. Um, all the other areas, uh, to me, you know, I think it's, it's, there's a little subjectivity built into this part of the. Analysis and discussion on, you know, uh, about the upzoning, but I think the other areas, I think that. The, the, the arguments that we laid out or the rationale we laid out for the remaining in the upzoning, I think I would stand by.
Um, I have a comment.
Go ahead, JJ.
Yeah, so um, um, I'm agreement, I, I am in agreement with you, Steve, about the Bowton Street. Um, proposal, um, pulling that back because of the. Current layout of the street, it's very narrow and this historically a very. Complicated street to get down in the first place, imagine if you increase the density of it, it'd be total chaos. So um, I'm in agreement with that, um, but I do have a question. Um, in regards to the. Let me see, that was. The Laurel Street in Elton Court area.
Sure, Brian, Brian's actually did a good idea and pulled the memo up, cause that, that. Zoomed in a little bit easier for us to, to go through.
Right, right, so that area is actually in um East Norwalk, as you know, and.
Brian, can you make it, I, um, I'm, I'm sorry, JJ, can, yeah, I wanted a little larger.
Okay, oh, and you know what, um, um, I'm, I'm just gonna jump back to original request that I had at the last meeting. Um, that neighborhoods are not clearly defined, not even on these new maps. So I mean, like, I thank you for listing the, the street areas, you know, um, that I was able to say, oh, yeah, this is East Norwalk, that's South Norwalk. But I thought we were gonna do a better job by doing neighborhoods, like, you know, just sort of like highlighted.
Yeah, I'm, we're happy to put together whatever you like, I'm not sure how else you'd like us to, to.
I mean, I'm, I'm talking about for public, you know, I'm sure they would like to see a little bit more detail, so this way they can see where they are on the map.
Well, we do have the, the interactive map up, so anybody can punch in their address. And it'll tell them the existing zoning and the proposed zoning, and it, that was down for a week while we made edits, but that is back up.
But some of the feedback that um I, that we receive from previous meetings is that. Even though there were some people who were targeting only their neighborhoods, there were other people who were saying the city as a whole. Who were just addressing other, other needs and other congestions and such, so, so it's not just for those. You know, who are talking about East Norwalk or, you know, whatever neighborhood they're in, but I, as a whole.
Okay, yeah, I mean, i- if it's helpful, it might have be helpful for me, uh, maybe we could pick a time and. Chat offline and we could look at the map and you can kind of, maybe we can map it out as we're doing it and, and try.
Yeah, and I, I think it, 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 it might, it, if everyone can kind of see. And, and know that this is, this is an exercise in transparency. Perhaps there won't be so much uproar about it if they can see the entire pie instead of just their slice.
Yeah, so I think that one of the maps that, yeah, thanks, Brian, that map at the beginning, that kind of puts the, that, that's more like the East Norwalk area. And we tried to label each of the three that, and the, the fourth area we didn't label because that's not going from the one to the two. But uh, areas one through three, we kind of tried to flag them on the map, so people will get a better sense. I mean, we couldn't, for something like this, what I. Would, would this be helpful is, or maybe what you're getting at, maybe we could like um. Identify like the train station or ninety-five or like something.
Well, yeah, I mean, those are great, tho- those are great identifiers, but why not also call the area by what the residents know it as? Like, okay, like for, you know, hospital district, you know, or, you know, um. Um, South Norwalk Wall Street District, something like that, this way they can find themselves on the map and compare what's going on in other neighborhoods.
Sure, well, we're happy to take a, and take another look at that.
Uh, Anna, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you so much for putting this memo together this way with the. Comparison of proposed existing and with the current uses and the historic data was. Quite helpful too. Um, I was surprised that. The upzoning proposals got cut back so much, honestly. Um, my concern was just making sure that decisions were being. Made looking at the current street level attributes. Um, and what I think we have here is that. You've gone from, um, in one of the documents that originally said that the goal was to. Make things a little more consistent, um, like when a street had two sides and they were different things, or. The top part of the street was different than the bottom part of the street and have, you know, the step down in dust density as you leave the big arteries. But the second goal um was just sort of, uh, it said, uh, to increase density by like one level. Kind of where, wherever there wasn't um. Uh, city water, city sewer problems, and it, it looks like you've sort of focused on, okay, where do we need. To target it so that we don't have those inconsistencies, like all of these examples. Were really clear that your concern was the top of the street is single family and the bottom half of the street is two-family and. It just doesn't make sense. Um, so I, I. Yeah, it seems like a big pullback and I understand why. Um. I was looking at an area in East Norwalk. Um, with Hayes and Adminson and Selden and driving around there, and I'm glad to hear that you were also driving around. I was concerned, I noticed two things, Selden at the top of Hayes. Really narrow, so that it's, it's truly single car for like, I don't know how much of that street. I took a video driving down, I was so surprised, and I was like, do we really want to add more density? Cause this is sort of like an artery to get in. Um, I was wondering if you noticed that on your drive. Um, yeah.
It may before you, the only reason I cut, I'm sorry, good job, just that way I don't forget what you asked the.
Sure, sure.
Circle back, yeah, and, and that, I was kind of hinting on that with the difference about the area off Bowton Street. And that, that Selden Street itself is narrow, but. The difference between that and then Robbins is that Robbins has no cut-through or outlet, whereas. The, the, the streets that are um perpendicular to Selden. They're all pretty wide and you can maneuver through those pretty well, so Selden almost. Functions as kind of like uh an escape valve off of those streets or a relief valve, if, if you got kind of cut off, there's at least a way. To get in and get out.
It's not as bad as the bottom part of Bowton, but I was just, I was surprised by that and then also like. I think it makes perfect sense that if you've got a street that's yay-long and this half of it. Is zoned one way and this half of it is zoned the other way, making it consistent makes perfect sense. At the same time, as you drive around the half of Naples, Adminson and Hayes. That's zoned for one to two families. It's very clear that cars are parked all over the front lawn. Everything is falling apart. What I try to hold on, and I, I think to myself like, wait a minute. Do we want the bottom half to match the top half, really, right? What I'm trying to hold on to, and I hope maybe you can reassure me of. Is that the new regulations for converting something to a two-family or building a two-family in the bottom half of these streets. They wouldn't let something like that happen, right?
Well.
Are we gonna see cars on the front lawns on the bottom half of Hayes now?
Kind of when I was making my initial remarks, that.
Yeah.
Talking about the areas that almost had zero driveways or zero parking, that. What, what that area you're just talking about jumped out at me because I was like, the driveways were almost. In many instances, they didn't have driveways, some of them, the driveway was, you could maybe park two cars. In front of the house, maybe, and often there was a case where you can only park one, so that was a case when, you know, I don't know, I didn't go back and look. At the dates on when those structures were built. Um, my guess is they were obviously built before the, you know, the two parking space off-street. Requirement was looked at or enforced that in the same way, so the new, anything new is gonna have to conform to. The, the, exactly, the four off-street spaces and they're gonna have, and you know, something else to keep in mind, if they can't comply, if somebody. Takes their lot and they say, I want to build a two-family, if they can't comply and build the building they want, then they can't get the permit.
And if they build it with the four spaces, but there's still people parked up the front lawn because the people have more than two cars per unit. Are we gonna see, are we gonna see increased enforcement? There was a comment in the online thing about enforcement where the response was staff. From staff was something like there's um zoning and enforcement aren't super connected. Um, and I think this situation speaks to that. You know, I, I, I would feel better about it if there was also sort of a. I don't know what I mean by a commitment, cause it sounds stupid even as it comes out of my mouth, um, but. Some sort of approach to like, we recognize this is a problem and this, so we're gonna do about it. Yeah, otherwise it seems like we're expanding a current problem.
Right, and, and that's a good point, that's been raised um in other areas as well. I think that. Obviously, so the, the way the zoning regulations work now, forgetting the um update rewrite piece of it is, you can't create. Um, parking in the front setback, which is, and, and we've had many conversations about this, the way it's. Written and enforced is problematic to begin with. That doesn't mean that we're gonna be able to stop somebody from. You know, pulling up on the lawn at the end of the night, it's the, that, that might be a different rule, or maybe that's an ordinance, or maybe that might be. Uh, it could be a different zoning vehicle, it's when they actually physically create a parking space, so they'll. Modify the surface to, you know, they'll pave it, they'll put down gravel, whatever they do. That's, that's a definite. Obvious violation that we can go after, or when they um. When they widen the curb cut, so then they end up with like, you know, you, you want to definitely avoid the scenario where they. Paved the whole front yard, that's one other nice caveat of the new regulations is it does regulate. Impervious surface as a whole versus just the building footprint, because now. They, i- if they want to try to add more surface parking area, that's gonna take away from building envelope as well, so it, there's. They really need to see how this is all gonna function and work for them before they go ahead and, and come up with any kind of development scheme.
But Steve, uh, before we go any further, and I know Nick's been, been waiting to ask a question, but um. Let me explain how I view um our meeting tonight and the new map. Um, we're not going to decide tonight. That this is the map and there aren't gonna be any more changes. What I'm hoping for. Is that we can at least reach a consensus that this is the new starting point. We can add to it, we can do some subtraction, uh, you know, because of the kinds of concerns that Anna is bringing up. Um, in following meetings. But wh- what, what I wanted to do is just get us closer. Uh, on uh, uh, the map, so that we can have these sort of micro discussions. Um, like, like the one that, uh, that Anna is bringing up. Um, that's what I'm looking for, if, if, if we can do it, to come out of uh, uh, this evening's meeting. That, that's the new starting point. Um, I think the, the, you know, what, what you've done here. Is you've listened to what you've been hearing from the public, what you've been hearing from the politicians, what you've been hearing from. From uh, uh, commission members and, and you've made uh, uh, adjustments um accordingly, whether we all agree. Um, or not, because as I said, I think uh, even if we say this is our new starting point. Uh, we can still move further in one direction um, or, or another. With that, I, I'm sorry, Nick. Um, it, it's your question.
No, don't apologize, that was just my question, I was like, process, like, how do you, do you want to like, go, let, let Steve go through each of the section and people generally say like. Thumbs up, this makes sense, thumbs up, this makes sense, and hit all the areas, just, you know, there's only like ten or twelve there that we can probably. Go through pretty quickly if we wanted to just be focused that way.
I, I think if the commission members are comfortable with that, I, that would certainly be acceptable to me.
I like that.
Right, I, I, I must have gotten a short printout because. I want to, you said there's twelve areas here?
I was guessing off the top of my head, there's not that many.
Oh, okay.
I see sixteen pages, yeah.
Sixteen pages, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so, so just to backtrack, I do see that on the top of the printout, at least the pages that I do have. You do have East Norwalk and South Norwalk and the Hospital Hill identified. But you don't have West Norwalk, you don't have, you know.
Well, they're not being, they're probably not being touched, that's why they're not in here, JJ.
Oh.
This, this is only the items or the parts that are gonna be upzoned, so it's very targeted on what's changing from. What it is today to the new.
This is what remains.
This is what remains, okay, cause this is a very thin list, okay.
And then what we did too, JJ, is we posted two maps on the update page, well, three maps technically, so one shows just. Like the proposed zoning map and other shows the whole zoning map and all the highlights, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I saw the comparisons, right? Oh, and then Wolf Pit Avenue, okay.
Yeah, there were a couple, to, to your point, JJ, there was in West Norwalk and then East Nor, not East Norwalk, uh, in Wolf Pit. Those were the only two areas, so it wasn't like a broad West Norwalk or off Connecticut Ave, it was just one section. So that's why it's kind of labeled the way it's labeled.
Okay, and, and, and there's, there's, um, okay, so yeah, I, I see where there's been a, a lot of trim, all right, thanks.
Sure, so we, we talked about, um, so this is kind of like the East Norwalk section and we talked about. Uh, this area uh off of Selden, um, so that's kind of like, kind of the, the discussion points, and I think this one. A lot of it like, well, Mr. Batch, uh, mentioned was the questions about the street, and I think that came, that was a pretty common question that came up with a lot of the areas. That we talked about was concerns about that, so happy to discuss more and move on however you'd like to go.
Um, Steve or Lou, I think it would be good, I want to commend whoever put together the proposed zoning, the existing zoning and the. Is, is existing residential use slash density, I think that was helpful. To compare because I have the big maps too, I have iteration one and iteration two, so. It was helpful, and I also see JJ's point of looking at the macro neighborhood, but since so much of it has been. Reverted to what it originally was, then, you know, we're kind of getting down to more the needle in the haystack, but why don't we just go through? As you presented it, each section, and if anybody has something to say, they can, and if, if not, well then you just move on.
Sure, so Brian, if you want to hit the next one. And again, this is staying um in East Norwalk, and this is kind of a, so to orientate, to orientate you guys. Um, you can see that probably in the map on the left shows it the best, this is basically exit sixteen. And it's just the northwest corner off exit sixteen, there is this, uh, when, you know, Elton Street area. That has a couple little side streets, it's completely surrounded by multifamily or mixed-use multifamily. To the, you know, not much of it to the north, but to the west and to the east, and then to the south is um ninety-five, obviously, and then there is. Uh, some, a little bit, Laurel Street is the other area we're gonna talk about in a second, but where it's, it's kind of a, like a. Odd little area by itself there, um, seems like a good spot to add uh the, the ability to do a two-family. You know, given its proximity and location to other commercial uses as well.
If I may, Lou.
Sure.
Um, I would just like to say, I think that's a really special little neighborhood, and there's only, there are no, oh, sorry. There's one single-family home with an ADU there, so why wouldn't you leave it? It's, you know, people that live there bought in a single-family neighborhood and they're gonna say, we like it this way, and if there's an opportunity for. To kind of make the multifamily, do the ADU.
Yeah, again, and that, this would, this would be, you know, a commission decision on what, which direction you wanted to go with that, um. What, what, one thing we didn't really talk about and, and what was in the memo is, you know, one of the goals. You know, at least staff and, and staff recommendation is to add some gentle density where we can. Um, without abandoning that prospect completely, and if someone chooses to do um. Single-family and converted to two-family, that's their option, it, it's not, just because we rezone, it doesn't mean they have to or they will.
Yeah, this seemed like a good spot.
Can you just read, read the text, because I think your text was uh, good, I'm sorry I spoke over you, Nick, uh. If you were trying to say something, but uh, the, but the text, if we could just read, if you don't mind just taking the time, Steve, to read. Read the uh, the text, because I thought I've found that very helpful when I, when I read these in terms of the rationale. Um, and then that's, that way it's put on the record, uh, you know, verbally. Either Brian's gonna read it or he's gonna blow it up, cause it. Okay, well, we could, yeah.
I can read it, I have it printed, a hard copy sitting in front of me, cause that's helpful.
Okay, go ahead.
Me?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, sure, okay, so the title of the page is Laurel Street, Elton Court, the Laurel Street area. Number two on the map represents a total of fourteen parcels proposed to be upzoned from B Residence to the C D three zone. Laurel Street is accessed via East Avenue, E V T Z, mixed-use. And westbound along Saint John Street, excuse me, C Residence. Traveling north along Laurel Street to Mulberry Lane and existing line. Sorry, an existing zone line splits the area between the B Residence Zone and the C Residence Zone. Despite the street's similarities, in addition, many of the parcels in this area are already two-family dwellings. Unlike other areas in East Norwalk initially proposed for upzoning. This area is surrounded by two-family or multifamily. Or multifamily is located less than half a mile from the train station and quickly accessed from exit sixteen. And that, that's referring to the Laurel Street, the um. Which is down on this bottom part of the map, and then it can, sorry, it continues on to say. Um, in the next paragraph, the Elton Street area, which is number three. Uh, represents a total of thirty-three parcels proposed to be upzoned from B Residence to the C D three zone. Like Laurel Street, these neighborhoods are accessed via East Avenue or Selig Street under the I ninety-five overpass. The area is surrounded by the existing East Avenue Village District, E A V D. And mixed-use zone that runs along East Avenue north of I ninety-five.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the first part of the Laurel Street area is. South of ninety-five, that's kind of on the lower part of the map, so we, we didn't talk about, we were talking on the other side specifically before, but that, there's two areas. Included on this map.
Right, and the numbers one, two, and three reference back to your first big map that showed all of the neighborhoods at once, the first page or whatever it was, I think it's first. After the. So if it's already zoned as a two-family, then what's going to change?
So the the we'll take them north and south, so the north area, which is the Elton Street, which is the top part of the map. Right now, that is zoned, single-family, which is the B, that's the middle map, Brian, could you scroll up just a little bit? There you go, so the the heading on that, in the middle one is the existing zoning. The one on the left is proposed, which is the CD three, which allows one and two-family, and then the map on the far right. Just indicates what the existing use is on those, and as as Ms. Lingaus pointed out, it's, you know. Predominantly ninety-nine point something percent single now, staff just is thinking this might be a good area to introduce uh, the ability to do two-family as well.
Right.
There's one family, the little dark yellow that has an ADU, otherwise it's all single-family.
Yeah, I think this is one of the, both of these are areas where. It makes sense to me, um. Why it would go there, and I keep reminding myself that like. You know, hearing constant complaints about large apartment buildings and. Sort of the the. The crush of that, um, not that that's necessarily gonna stop. But the alternative. To that, if you want to have a growing city, which most cities, the goal is not to shrink. Um. Is the soft. Increase in density and that, you know, in twenty or thirty years, this area that's CD four. Might have some more two families. In its middle and like. Things will be okay, so I keep reminding myself.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that and also add that um, with the the bridge project that's going on here. I believe they have reopened the walking path, if not, it seems like it's hopefully reopening soon, which makes this uh, much more walkable into. Oyster Shell Park uh, and uh, the Lockheed Matthews Museum and and such, so it does provide even more accessibility for for leisure activities as well and. Gives good. Housing diversity uh, to those amenities, uh, because those amenities are kind of locked away from. Single-family and two-family houses at the moment, uh, and surrounded by um, higher density, so this does provide the ability for folks to have the ability to access those. Those features that um. I currently have to bike to if I want to, if I want to get to them, uh, but gives more more folks with more housing options, the ability to access some of those amenities that our town has or our city has.
And then we didn't really get into Laurel as much, but Laurel is is. I, to me, it's, you know, obviously, looking at the map on the right. You can see there's already a mix of. Uh, two-family and uh, multi already within that area, and that one is surrounded by um. Existing zoning that allows for two-family, multi, or mixed-use, so that one, I think, is just kind of like a pocket that was left behind. And again, keep in mind that even if it gets rezoned, does not mean it has to change or will change.
Steve, I would agree that that Laurel Lane and you cross the street onto Osborne, there's multifamily, there's multifamily on St. John. Makes a lot more sense for the goals than the Elton Street, Sherry Street neighborhood where there's only single-family there. It's bad enough, you have to live right on top of I ninety-five, but anyway.
Brian, maybe just there you go. And this this was off the same map, um. This is what we call the Cottage Street area, which is still in East Norwalk, but further south. Um, it's not going from one to two, but going from existing two to the CD four, which allows um, multifamily. The map on the far right kind of shows what's happening there today, where the, I'd say. Over half is probably multi, uh, there's a bunch of two-family and then, but there are still some single families in that area too. Um. Again, similar recommendations in terms of. The existing multifamily functions well in there. Adding the, you know, the ability to do multi on some of these properties, we don't think will infringe on anything. Uh, it makes sense, and it's another way to add, I I, you know, and again, the CD four. Uh, it's denser, but it's not, you know, it's not South Norwalk train station dense, so it's it's.
That's quite. In in CD four, um. What, how many stories, what's what's uh, uh, the height?
Sure, so in CD four, it's uh, three and a half stories. And it's uh, one unit for every one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet of lot area that mimics what the D-zone is today. And the D-zone. Is um. I think backs up, yeah, there it is, thanks, Brian, onto the northwest of the the site. And then everything, previously, I think we had captured a wider area as part of the upzoning, but everything to the south of Cottage would remain um. Uh, two-family zone, one to two-family zone.
And CD four allows for neighborhood business as well, correct?
It does, we have some changes proposed for that to to kind of. Limit the potential where that might not be wanted, so we tried to, I can show you that language afterwards if that, but I don't want to detract from the map now, but I'm happy to show you what we. Put together for that.
I have a comment. Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
The um. Cut in the text. And thank you, Tammy, for reading the last one, uh, I just, I wonder if we should just be doing that for everyone and maybe take turns reading, but. Um. I'd be happy to reach that, read this Cottage Street one right now if you want. Um, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, because there's a point in the in here that uh, I was gonna bring up about non-conforming. Coming into conforming, so the Cottage Street area representing twenty-one properties is currently zoned as C Residence. And is proposed to be upzoned to the CD four zone, which allows multifamily mixed-use developments along Cottage Street as well as the western half of East Avenue. There are already met, ha. There are already have many multifamily developments, I think that's just a little typo. And therefore, such an upzone would bring those properties into conformity. And not represent a drastic change in the type of development that the area is already familiar with. And I and I want to point out. Something that I agree with um, the ENNA. Um. A concept that for uh, missing middle housing that they've been pushing. Uh, on uh, Norwalk Zoning Matters, it's a Facebook page. If you go to that. Not everybody's a member of that, you know, it's a it's a private group. But if you, I I forget, I might have five or six hundred members, maybe. Um. But I've belonged to that for years and I've been reading. ENNA has been posting that almost a demand for missing middle housing. Uh, between July eighteenth, twenty nineteen and February twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Diane Cece of ENNA uh, made uh, four posts. Um, there may be more, but that's what comes up in a search, if you go to the top and search on the group. Missing middle housing. You'll come up with four posts. Um, in the in those in that three-year period. Uh, and missing middle is uh, basically duplexes, triplexes and quads, quadplexes. And uh, buildings up to nineteen units. Uh, sixteen to thirty units per acre. Um. Three to four stories and uh. On. Uh. February twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Diane Cece posted. Uh, can P and Z say incremental infill and middle housing? Nope, because they just don't get it. And on August nineteenth, twenty twenty. Uh. Diane Cece posted, missing middle housing, who's in? So I think that over the years, it's been clear that ENNA has. Had an interest in upzoning to create missing middle housing. Because they they've stated it, uh. I assume that's a the official stance of ENNA, so I just wanted to point that out. And that uh, it seems that it's. From current comments that there's an about face or a one-eighty turn on that. From ENNA, for whatever reason, maybe because it's an election year. But uh, I would, I would say that uh, certainly. What we're talking about here is uh, an attempt to create some missing middle housing, which ENNA has been asking for over a three-year period. Uh, on Norwalk Zoning Matters, and you you could, I actually have a lot more. Comments that were made, but I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mike.
If I may, Lou.
Yep.
Thank you, um. I think it would be helpful when we are talking about. Multifamily. Units that the city sort of acknowledged that. Condominiums are ownership properties, and for example, in this Cottage Street, it's a perfect example. Number twenty-five on the map is a condo complex that has about. Eight units, I'm trying to look it up on my other computer, I'll let you know exactly, I apologize, and. I think. Those type of complexes which allegedly the developers don't want anymore, they only want much larger condominium complexes, why, I don't know, because these types. Sell quite nicely in Norwalk, that when you look at this little area. It makes sense. To add more of that type of housing right there, and that might be exactly what that missing middle is. It's not a massive apartment building like the Crown and Broome, it's just. A condominium complex as versus an apartment building, and I think we really muddy the water when we talk about. Multifamily, 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 because nobody really knows what we're describing. But when you say apartment building, people get the idea, and when you say condominium, certainly there can be. You know, two in a in a multifamily, but that it can expand up into a certain number, and maybe that would. Just give people a better idea of what you're trying to achieve in some of these little spot corrections. Um, or spot adjustments. And CD four can take that, but even if you did CD three here, you would still be able to get. More than. A two-unit, more than a duplex, right? Steve in CD three?
No.
Only two.
Two max.
Yep, sorry, okay, sorry, I had that one backward, um. But anyway, I I think it would just be helpful to talk about what exists there. It's really not multifamily, it's condominiums and that big, there are a lot of them in that one spot, and I'll I'll get. You how many there are in just a minute if you think it's important.
I I mean. Yeah, I I know we've had this conversation before, I I I mean, if there was a way to. Incentivize condos versus apartment rental apartments in some areas, I. I think that that obviously would probably make our life easier in terms of. Perception and and commentary, um. I I know I had, you know, wasn't on this scale project, but I had a, was meeting with a developer the other day and the question came up about. Rentals versus condos, and they were just like, they're. There's financially, it's. Almost impossible for them to do condo developments on a large scale, it just doesn't work.
Well, you know what, I did do a little bit of looking in my real estate capacity, and I'm going to disagree with that developer. There's things in Westport going on, there are two very large projects in the Rowatton part of town that are condominiums that are going on. So it isn't exactly accurate, I think they just. Take it because financially it works for them, um, I don't, I don't buy it, so sorry about that.
But this, yeah, and just to clarify, the person I was talking to was not doing projects on this this scale here.
Okay. Well, I think we need to push on it because I do think the banks are lending here in Lower Fairfield County on condominiums in Westport that are. Either new development or redeveloped old like um.
Well, Tammy.
Buildings.
The thing I've seen is with the FHA with the loans with condos is. They don't want to give if their other, if many of the units are going to be mortgaged out versus buying cash in hand. I could imagine in Rowatton and Westport. People are buying these condos outright and not having mortgages, which is leading to. The risk here, I'm totally with you on how do we incentivize more condos? But that's what I've seen from what I've tried to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out this as well, like, why can't we get more condos? And it seems like the at the uh, you know, the lenders have if there are different standards with. How many units are going to be mortgaged versus how many units are just going to be bought out uh, side on, you know, outright. And then, Steve, I know you guys were thinking of talking to. Uh, counsel of whether or not we could do more requirements as it relates to condos versus rentals, do we have any word on that?
Yeah, that from what they, and I'll dig out the email, I don't want to. Incorrectly stated, but they saw that was, we we looked at it particularly. When when the um, upzoning from one to two was uh, big focal point. Uh, and they indicated that was not going to be feasible.
Okay, if you can share that, great.
In any case, we're drifting away from our map.
It's, yeah, 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 but it's.
Back to it and move on.
I I am sorry, though, it's an important point, really important point. Because one of the reasons I was. Hesitant. In the last meeting, so hesitant about upzoning, you know, and I spoke. At length. About it. Um. Was the nature of the of the uh, industry. Uh, and and investors. And uh, with investors being advised to go into into smaller housing. Uh, rentals can be sold a lot easier than a condo building, so a developer wants to build a rental building that they can turn around and sell. Uh, as an, you know, it's it's an asset that they can sell easily. And uh. And when you have big players on the national scene. You know, working in in neighborhoods. Uh, which was what what one of my fears was. The uh. You're not gonna get, uh, you're gonna get more rentals, uh, as opposed to owner-occupied housing. And at a bigger scale, you're not gonna get bigger, you're not gonna get condo buildings, you're gonna get uh, exclusively rental buildings. And so I think it's being driven by the developers, not. Not necessarily by the banks. Uh, because they want something they can turn around and sell, and you can see the number of big projects in Norwalk. That have sold over, you know, recent years. Uh. You know, including Waypoint, uh, you know, changed hands, uh. And and the Avalons, I think both of those have been sold off, or at least one. Changed its name, uh, you know, the the one down on Beldon. Uh, is no longer called Avalon Beldon, I don't know if it's called The Confluence or something like that, but anyway, um.
You got tiny little projects, not Avalons and waypoints and that, Mike, we're talking about, you know, like maybe. Four units, six units max.
Well, I'm using those as examples of why they. The 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 industry, yes, I mean, I'm using those as an example, but the thing is, I, in our neighborhood. We now have more non-owner occupied two families than we do owner-occupied two. As when I moved here twenty-five years ago. Most of the two families were owner-occupied. And now we don't even know who owns them, there, you know, we, if we make a complaint. It it it. Nobody even knows who to make the complaint to, they even not, even the the city has trouble finding out who owns these buildings, because it can be owned by three or four banks. You know, and and so I'm I'm talking about all scales, I'm just saying that the the explaining the reason. Why I feel at this point in time, I'm, this was one of the reasons why I was uh, so hesitant about. The wider scale upzoning. In that the uh, we were not going to get a guarantee of being of having owner-occupiers or allowing people small, you know, people who never had a, never owned. First-time homeowners giving those opportunities, which was one of the reasons for upzoning, uh, that, you know, we've been giving. Um, and so I I pulled back on that because because I don't know, I I'm afraid of the industry, but that's one reason why we don't have condos. It is the is why that was brought up. And it's uh, it's not even so much financing, I think it's just that developers don't want to. Be uh, locked in, uh, as they want to be able to flip it as quickly as possible. All right, I'm done.
Steve, let's move on to the next map.
They're switching areas of town now.
Yes, and this is. There we go, so this is off of Main Street, um. And. There, they're like, um. We have the, you know, maybe we didn't do the existing, right now, those areas and the reason we didn't do, um. Oh, we did do it, okay. I correct myself. So the map on the left is the the map you just saw was kind of the broader scale map where there are two pockets presently zoned, um. C-zone again, which is the one and two-family zone, and the proposal is to uh. Allow those two areas to be, go from the CD. Uh, from the C-zone to the CD four, which again goes from two-family to multi. Um, map on the right. Shows the the current land use in those areas, and again, a a good chunk. Of those areas are multi right now or two. Um, and there's a couple. Pockets specifically on the northern area that have a couple of single-family, but it's the for the most part, um. Uh, multi or two, I think, you know, the the, in looking at these, and one of the things Brian and I have talked about quite a bit is the idea, it would be, what we'd like to see. Happen over time in these areas, which I think would be a good thing, is if they added. To those developments, um.
where they'd add like the, a unit or two in those areas as opposed to just a whole scale change. So I think there's, that's one area going from the two to the CD four that I, I want to think about some, another tweak to kind of like a safeguard to put in there. I haven't quite figured it out yet, but I think I'll come up with something fairly shortly. But I think regardless that this area makes sense to, um, you know, given its location, given what it's surrounded by. It is particularly if you look at the map in the middle. You know, you have to the north, there's industrial number two, to the east along the corridor is, um, commercial zone, which allows for more density as it is. And then wraps around with existing multifamily kind of in pockets to the northeast, um, and south. So I think this area is just kind of a little bit left behind and it makes sense to continue, uh, to look at these areas separately.
And then one of the reasons why we included that this, this, so this is the nineteen twenty nine. This was the original zoning map that was adopted in Norwalk. And so one of the areas, so this is the Wilton Street, Jefferson, Davenport, um, Godfrey area. So that was originally zoned for D-residents and then just over the years it was for some reason down zoned to, to C-residents. But that's kind of why you see all of these, uh, kind of, uh, leftover multifamily parcels still, still in those areas.
Wilton Avenue on one side, uh, has, uh, the railroad tracks, doesn't it? Behind the houses.
Right. Yeah. So you see this, uh, yeah, for some reason the tax assessor has it as a track that's multi, but it's yet this long pink piece.
Right.
On the, uh, on Wilton, uh, south of Horn, it looks like there are a number of, uh, properties there that, um, have a similar composition to the north side of Wilton. Uh, does it make sense to move that blue boundary so that way those properties come into compliance? And we also have that like unified street view as you're driving down that, that portion.
Brian, can you zoom in a little?
You mean where the train tracks are, Chapin?
No, um, uh, other side of Wilton from that, those ones there that are highlighted. Yep. They have a similar composition to the north side of Wilton that's being, uh, suggested. And my suggestion is that we take that blue line, we bring it down to the back of those property lines that border, uh, Wilton that, uh, are abutting the street. Just to bring them into compliance since they are largely composed of the, uh, CD four.
I feel like that neighborhood has made some progress over the last few years. There's a lot of street trees going in there. And if the state would allow the train station at Wall Street, that would make that neighborhood a lot more, you know, what they're looking for.
Uh, one thing I didn't get a chance to research, which I'm going to do before the next meeting, there's that new development that went in about, I'm going to say twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that got finally finished just to the north of there. It's not sound view, but it's sound something where it was.
Yeah, it was a couple of condominium thing.
Do you mean the single family homes, all those?
There's a bunch of single family, but there's townhouses. There's a whole mix of different things in there that actually I think came out pretty nice. So I, I wanted to do a little research on how that all transpired and what went into that. Cause that, I mean, that seems like it could be a good model for a lot of the, the type of housing that we're talking about.
I agree. That's what I was referring to. Yeah, it does look nice. Yeah. And then too, the city has put in, or whether it's whomever, the tree alliance has put in some nice street trees along there too.
And I think what Chapin said suggesting makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause right now you've got one side of the street doing one thing and the other side doing the other. I'm looking at it on Google Maps right now and it seems like it would make sense for them to be the same.
Yeah. And I think a intersection at Horn is a good like breaking point for, uh, if it is going to have like a, a difference.
All right, let's have, let's have the staff, uh, go out there again and, uh, take a look.
Yep, we can do that.
Out of the complicated one.
Yeah, this is the area with by far the, the most amount of change in terms of, um, upzoning, but I think to me, um, there's a lot of text we can definitely read that. I think this area, uh, uh, you know, the, of, for justification purposes has, makes the most sense for the upzoning based on the proximity to the hospital. And just, I think Brian, if you could, uh, we can, if you want to do the text, we can do the text. Otherwise just we can hop to the maps too. How are you guys would like to do it?
Well, you wrote up a rather large write-up on this and I think it's very, I think there's a lot going on in this neighborhood.
Sure. Want, want me to read it or just let it be?
Go ahead.
Oh, but yeah, go ahead and read it.
All right, here we go. All right, Brian, I don't need it zoomed in that much. Thank you. All right. The Hospital Hill area contains the broadest upzone, which is largely due to the existing mix of multiple zones in a relatively small area. And as discussed previously, considering that the hospital is one of the most significant employers in the city, provided, providing additional housing options in this area is important to employees and will lead to less dependence on automobiles to get to work. The total number of properties proposed to be upzoned in this area is three hundred and sixty, which is approximately one third of the total number of parcels proposed for upzoning. Traveling northbound from Route One, commercial, re- represented in red, much of the existing streets are zoned as D-residents, which is multifamily, like Clinton Avenue, Glenwood Avenue, Ferris Avenue, Stewart Avenue and Woodbury Avenue. At different dis- at different distances along the streets, the zone changes from D-residence to C-residence, which is a two-family zone. And in the case of Ferris Avenue, transitions from D-residence to B-residence, which is a single family, back to C-residence again. Staff recommends that these areas be re-zoned as shown on the map, map above to better transition from higher intensity mixed-use development along Route One to lower intensity mixed-use developments in the CD four to the two-family residences in the CD three, and then to single-family residences in the CD three S. The existing neighborhoods and streets accommodate many multifamily and duplex, duplexes today and are well-connected to Route One as well as Norwalk Hospital. Therefore, increasing housing options, particularly affordable housing options in this area for the major job centers is important for the future development of the city. So I think when you look at the maps, starting, obviously the one on the left is the proposed. And then the map on the, the map in the middle is the existing and the map on the right is showing just basically what all the uses are today. You can see that there's just a lot, the, the, starting with the middle map, there's just a lot going on in terms of jumping from, multifamily to two, to single, back to two. Um, and then looking at the map on the right where the mix of land use doesn't always follow that. And then I'm not quite sure why, but I think that the, the intent, one of the intents of, in addition to supplying, um, housing options in and near the hospital is to kind of clean up what this mess of spaghetti is on the map. And I think the proposal provides that gradation of, um, intensity along Route One to a step down to the CD four, to a further step down to the CD three, and then stepping down to the single-family zone. And it kind of provides that area in and around the hospital, which is, is a viable walk shed to the hospital.
Am I reading this correctly, that there are a fair number of ADUs, uh, in that area?
There are some, maybe Brian zoom in on the map on the right. Particularly within the area for the upzoning, there are some ADUs in that area. Um, there are more so outside of the upzoning area in the single-family zone, but there are some within the upzone area as well.
These could be attached ADUs as well, right?
Yeah, these are probably all attached. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this makes a lot of sense to me. Especially right around the hospital. You already have some restaurants and stuff over there. It sort of lends itself to just growing in that way. Um, and it sort of achieves a lot of the things we want to do with the rewrite.
Okay, I'm going to be the contrarian as usual. Nick, not to disagree with you, but just an observation, Steve, the CD three where Benedict Street isn't labeled. But, um, if you go on your proposed map, you see that little lollipop. It's a little, um, cul-de-sac. Keep going north a little bit. Yes, right there, Bucarelli Court. So that area that you have blued off below that, that's, um, Benedict Street and that's all single family. And then I would say that you keep that single family and then the other area go up to the north a little bit. Christie on, um, and it's flanked by Stewart Street, which then turns into Philo Street. That there's all single family, right? Yep. I see where Finley is and Christie. That area, right? It's sort of a long rectangle and it's, you know, sort of matchstick lots. I would say that should be left, single family, because the Benedict Street is sort of your dividing line. And that's kind of a busy street and, and, I mean, it should be the, both sides of Benedict Street and then Christie Street and, um, Stewart Street.
Yeah, I'm going to try to, I, I mean, the reason we've proposed as is, or a- as we've proposed it, I should say, is because of the, that area in particular is a very short walk, um, to the hospital.
Well, with all due respect, that Benedict Street is not walkable at all. Maybe Jim Travers can work his magic there. Um, and did we ever, did we ever find out what percent of the people who work at the hospital actually live in Norwalk or in the area?
Um, I don't recall specifically, but I think we could try to get that information for you.
I think one of the things we want to do is encourage the people who work at the hospital to live in Norwalk. You know, a lot of them live in Shelton because they can't afford to live in Norwalk. And if the zoning has changed and there are more, you know, housing in the missing middle opportunities, I think the people in the hospital would be happy to live in Norwalk.
Tammy, just for example, um, I just did a quick measure. So it's not a hundred percent accurate, but I, I took, I went from Clinton down Benedict, um, through Truman. To the hospital and it's a quarter mile.
Okay. Well, that's good.
How, how, how many, um, uh, lots are there, uh, on, um, Benedict?
Uh, we'd have to count those. I mean, I, I think one other thing too, and I, it may be.
And I'm wondering if it's, if it's a significant change.
Yeah, we definitely can't probably zoom in and we could probably count it right now. The other thing I was thinking too is if, you know, part of the, i- if there are areas that, you know, and it's not necessarily always under this commission's purview, but if this is an area that you wanted to make more walkable, um, that's a justification for adding the infrastructure in that area. If there are inadequate sidewalks or bike lanes or whatever you felt was appropriate or, you know, bike walk felt was appropriate for that area. That helps make the, make the case for that area.
Lou, the two areas that I'm suggesting be left, CD, uh, single family. It's about thirty-six. That's, I'm, I'm looking at a map that I have about thirty-six. Maybe it's thirty-seven or eight.
Well, at, at the very least, let's note that, um, as a concern that we need to resolve. Um, we don't have to resolve it this evening, but, uh, let's, let's, um, um, leave it as a discussion item.
Yeah, as you, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, there did, I, I don't think this is the end of the map discussion because we have some other specific requests that came in from the public as part of this to rezone this parcel or that parcel. So we can, we can revisit that at a follow-up date as well.
Okay.
Now, I ask, I want to ask Steve a quick question here. Uh, kind of a general question, but you, you know, I always feel like these, these, uh, single family zones could easily become two-family with ADUs since we passed that, you know, recently. And if an ADU gets approved, they need, uh, is it two full spots for the ADU? I believe it is. No, I think it's one. It's only once. Right. So two for the house and then one, two for the main portion of the dwelling and one for the ADU.
The ADU is most likely going to be smaller than the second unit if it was a two-family.
It certainly will. Yes, it will be.
It's got less parking.
That right. So that's the rationale. Thank you. So, but the, but the, you know, the idea that anybody's going to be able to put four parking spots on these small lots in some of these zones is, is really prohibitive. I don't see, uh, uh, unless they completely pave the backyard, uh, how a lot of this is even going to be possible, you know, in, in, in reality. And I think you're, everybody's aware of that. We brought this up, you know, before that it's not going to be, there's not going to be a wholesale change uh, in, in, yeah, certainly in the, uh, in, in most of the properties. But they, uh, I, I would, I would err on the side of caution and keep like the, the area that Tammy just mentioned, uh, single family, because someone could always add an ADU and they wouldn't have to pave their entire backyard. Uh, uh, they would only need one more spot. Anyway.
But my two, two things to that, one is, um, you lose the ability to combine lots to build potentially and combine to create, give you the space to do some of this larger development. And then two, the other things that I think we need to consider is, you know, investment firms are also buying single-family homes and making them rentals. So the rental argument for duplexes is also happening at the single-family home level. So I just want to think about that too, if that, you know, just something I'm sure you're aware of too, of like, you know, we may run into the same problem of a rental having a landlord, you know, if we're worried about that, we're going to worry about that everywhere.
Uh, right. Well, you know, and you also have the fact that the, um, the single, the, the large companies are competing with first-time homeowners who don't have a chance. So that, you know, that, that makes it, uh, that much harder for someone to buy whether a single family or a two-family.
Absolutely.
And, uh, but I, I still, uh, would err on the side of caution there. Be, anyway, I'm, I'm just throwing these facts, factoids, I guess they are, out there as we're talking about this. Because the, the idea that these small lots are going to become two families and then pave, and then suddenly somebody has an entire backyard paved and the owner is some bank somewhere and then nobody's enforcing the, the, well, not nobody, but I mean, the, 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 uh, there's no one, there's no owner around to make sure that the rules are being met. It's a big issue in our neighborhood. So I'm just bringing that up. One, I mean, the other part of it, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Chapin.
Sorry, one quick response to that. And then I did have a question on this map. Um, I, I started taking a look at the, the numbers, uh, a little while ago and I, I haven't had a chance to complete my review of the, um, uh, owner occupancy documents provided, but it seems about three thousand properties in town were non-owner occupied that were single-family residences. And about eleven hundred, uh, in, in Norwalk were two-family that were non-owner occupied. So just from a numbers perspective, now obviously like single family is a significantly larger portion and, well, uh, two-family is a lower portion. But just wanted to share that, that like quick analysis I had done from, from those, uh, um, spreadsheets, just to share a little on that. Uh, go ahead, Steve. I, I have a question separate from that, but I just wanted to layer that, that comment on, uh.
I, what, and it, and it, again, it, if, if anything does redevelop, say you did, um, any, any single-family zone parcel gut to be a common two-family. So they had, like, as we talked about earlier, they have to design it to meet the code. So they have to have the four compliant parking spaces. They have to, they cannot exceed the total impervious surface coverage. So that, you know, that the parking spaces might be accommodated through garages so that could dictate the kind of design that they do. So I, I think part of our argument on the staff side has been giving people options, not saying what you have to do or what, saying what you could do. If you choose to do it, whatever you design has to comply. And again, you know, enforcement does come in on the backend, making sure that what is, um, what is built actually conforms to what is required and what was approved. And then after the fact, making sure that they don't, um, you know, six months after they get their CO, all of a sudden there's like the whole, to your point, Mike, the, the whole backyard is, is a sea of asphalt. Then we were kind of defeated the purpose of doing a lot of the rezoning. So that there, they, they do interact and there are definitely factors that we have to think about. And, and not, since you brought it up, isn't the city making a commitment to better enforcement? I mean, I, I heard you say that in one of the meetings, uh, you know, last month.
A commitment to better enforcement? I mean, I, I heard you say that in one of the meetings, uh, you know, last month. And is, is that a commitment that is gonna, you know, be real?
Yeah, and actually, and, and Mr. Bachnick had emailed me with a lot of enforcement-related questions, so we're gonna. That'll be one of our topic areas for a meeting down the road, um. About enforcement and how it interacts and how it interacts with the new regulations and what's done. So, yes, and. Yeah, I don't want to get off, way off topic on that tonight, but ye- yes is the short answer.
Right, well, it's the biggest topic in our neighborhood when it related to the upzoning. So just to, just to make it, make, and it was when I spoke. At the last meeting about it, it was. The, you know, the number one, I could, because I've been living, I, as I said, I had a unique experience here in South, in, uh. Golden Hill for twenty-five years and watching. Less owner occupied. Uh, houses turn into enforcement nightmares for the neighbors. And we live it and breathe it every day. And, you know, we need, we need, I think people need to hear. A commitment on the city side if they're going to be won over by this argument that we're making, uh, because I'm, I, I'm not convinced. Right now that we can handle. The upzoning and for the enforcement actions that the upzoning would entail in terms of protecting. Uh, uh, neighbors, uh, be- because of our, my own personal experience. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry, I. You've had a bad experience in Golden Hill, and I think there may be. Numerous reasons for that, but I also, as I. Visit friends and as I go, go around Norwalk, I see neighborhoods that have two-family houses. And one-family houses who have, that have mixes that are well-kept, that are neat and clean. You know, it's clear that. They are not having the experience that you had in Golden Hill. I don't think that's the only experience. That you could have with two-family houses. I think a lot of. In Golden Hill, just because they were big old houses, a lot of them got turned into rooming houses before there was any real. Regulation, you know, there's been a long history of. Problem.
As, as Steve has said, um, this is going to be a separate topic for another meeting. Um, I want to keep us focused on the map.
Right, I don't want us to get gold, to Golden Hill. That's all.
Capen, you had something, something else?
Yes, um, briefly, I just wanted to, um, say that I, uh. Um, see in the existing residential uses and also glad that that tile is, is shown here. That there is a, a lot of, like in the. Section that's currently zoned C, that's kind of that island, uh, on, on Ferris and extending out to Benedict Court and such. It, uh, looks like the majority or maybe all of those properties are either, uh, two-family or multifamily. So it does appear that there is. Uh, demand in that area. For more of those types of properties. And so I'm glad to see that, um. The, uh, portions southern and eastern of that, uh, but I think Tammy has given me some homework on, uh. Benedict and, uh, Christie, uh, to go spend some more time thinking about those areas as well. So that's all, just a comment on that.
Thanks.
The one area I wanted to possibly raise, um, in this. On this page is the triangle. Uh, the triangle with Fairview Magnolia Spruce Highwood. That one, I understand that it's quite close to the hospital, um. But I think like currently it's. You know, single and two-family, there's only a couple. Multifamily buildings, uh, on Fairview. And I've heard anecdotally that Magnolia has some issues with. The too many cars for the size of the, the street situation. I haven't been able to drive over there myself. Um, but I feel like you could. You could keep that C. And it would still have the, uh. It would still make sense in terms of the move out. Scaling, stepping down the density.
But Steve, let's, let's note that as, uh, uh, another area that, um, we need a little more information on.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'd, and I'd add to that West Cedar and Ivy and Taylor. It's a sort of a different distinct neighbor, neighborhood over there. In a Butts Colonial Village. And if you upzone it to CD four, you're really adding a lot of density. On what is already densely populated already. Anyway.
Okay, let's take a look at that as well.
Thank you.
That, uh, so this is where. Like the, I guess we talked about number three already in the South Norwalk area. Um, so we don't need to get into that one, but the other areas, um. This is an area now that is, um. Frank, you zoom in just a little bit. Sorry about that. Yeah, this is like, uh, Avenue A, Avenue B, Avenue C, Avenue D, um. It's kind of a, a mix right now. There's a, you know, probably. Over half, a little over half is single now, um, but there is quite a bit of two-family and some multifamily in this area as well. This area is, you know, went up and down this, every one of those streets yesterday, and it's. Pretty easy to navigate in and out of those streets. The whiffs are pretty wide. The, the city actually just put in new, um. Most of that, I don't know if every street, but I think it all looked like a lot of the streets are getting all new sidewalks, um. New streetscape things in there and it, given the location of this, um. Area towards Route One, given its proximity to areas to the east, which are allowed for multifamily already, um. Our staff was thinking this would be a good spot to add the ability to do two-family as well. And I think, um. Ryan, if you want to scroll down, the, was the prior zoning, um, allowed for? I can't quite read.
Yeah, so the, it's always tricky to look at the old nineteen twenty-nine map, just because there's, they don't have parcel lines on there and the streets don't. Well, half the streets weren't finished back then as to what they are today. Um, but you can kind of see, so here's the each avenue, so Avenue A, B, C, D, and E. This, uh, cross, uh, is C residence. So this was all area zoned for two-family previously. And it used to go actually all the way down to Flax Hill. So we're just grabbing back, uh, sort of the avenue. Uh, A through, through E, which has a lot of that existing two-family that, you know, it's been grandfathered in over the years. And then kind of when you get south of there is kind of, although it used to be zoned for two-family, it never really took off. So it's really a lot of the singles. So it's kind of like a good. Dividing line.
Well, you also didn't mention it's, um, the adjacency to the throwaway.
Correct, yep.
Right, and we didn't, we didn't talk about this is, um, this is a condo complex today, so it is technically being upzoned, but kind of just because it. Probably isn't going to change anytime soon, so it's just. Can really highlight it for you.
Okay, if there are no questions.
Well, I'm just gonna make, just kind of go back to that, uh, historic map. It's interesting that over the years. Golden Hill was B in nineteen twenty-nine. The alphabet city with, or al-, you know, we call it the alphabet neighborhood, the A, B, C, D, that was C-zone. And then over the years it flipped. Art, Golden Hill became C. And then the Al-, the, uh, Leonard Streets became B. And I just find that interesting. And historically, as a historical fact, that the density flipped from ones. Going back to nineteen twenty-nine, it somehow got exchanged from one neighborhood to the other. Who knows why that decision was made?
There's probably an interesting backstory to that.
It's just, it's just an interest, yeah, I mean, it's just the fact that, I mean, we are a two-family zone, we're a C-zone. Uh, and I'm, you know, I can see my house or, you know, it's like a dot, it looks like a house. Uh, on Elmwood and, and Hillside, but that it, it, it somehow the densities got flipped. Uh, from the original zoning. So anyway, just a, just a factoid again. That there's no explanation for.
And a little further south, um. This is kind of a, another little odd area off Flax Hill. Where there is, um, and the big parcels in the middle, um, those are civic parcels, those are city properties, Ford or Farm. Uh, as well. So this, it's kind of like the areas within the blue. Are existing single-family zone, um. And they're kind of. Separated by the rest of the, from to the south and east is, uh. You know, two-family today. Uh, I don't know how many, Brian, how many properties are in that fifty-five in total. We just think this cleans the map up quite a bit and. Allows for just a little bit of gent- gentle density, cleans the map up, um, I think it just makes more sense to leave it, uh, to leave it as proposed.
Here you also have those interesting through streets, they have like Michael Street here, so the south end of Michael's two. You have the end of Meredith Street, or.
That's a dead end.
Yeah, dead end. So the, the dead end is actually, usually it's the reverse you see is that the two-family is on the beginning of the street and the singles at the end. Um, this is the opposite where the two-family is actually at the end of the street. Um, so it kind of just brings that whole cul-de-sac as, as one. Um, same for Haddock. Kind of rounds out those streets.
And those streets are all really navigable too as well.
Yeah, but if you ask anybody that lives on Michael Street, what it's like when the elementary school is getting in and out, that street is. Not fun to navigate. And then you've got the high school right there. So there's a lot of. Vehicular traffic going through there. And. The Fodor Farm happens to have some nice historic buildings on it, as does, there are a couple more on Flax Hill Road. And I personally think that historic structure should, you know. Uh, we should do everything we can to preserve those. And I'm not talking nineteen sixty multifamily houses. I'm talking things from the turn of the century. Um, and it's a massively busy intersection Highland and Flax Hill. So you're going to make it more by encouraging multifamily along there.
Well, it's just two-family, not multi, so just.
Okay, two-family, sorry, my bad. Um, and Steve, while you have that map out and we were talking about the Bowden Street, if you look. Where Lennox is at the bottom of the map and then. In the center one in the existing, you could see the letter at the top of the letter B. If you're looking to add multifamily, you included. Taking it out in the Robinson Square Street, but you should add it back on the south side of Lennox. Yeah, exactly. And maybe if you go back and look at the Bowden Street one, that's where you're getting the top of that.
Yeah, I think so.
Figure map, Brian.
Go back to Bowden Street.
Fuzzy, but I, it's like, uh. Uh, just.
It's the red line at Brian McMahon High School kind of.
Such, so actually it is grabbed in, I think, under the Bowden Street, let me see. Yes, we did grab it in under the Bowden Street.
No, 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 the, yeah, right there. See where the red dotted line in the middle? Picture is go right across, because those are Lennox. Street properties.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They're not access from Robbins.
Correct.
Yeah, so we, we did grab that as part of the, the, the Bowden Street map. I don't know why on here it's not.
We'll fix that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Area in this, uh, I will call like the South Norwalk. Area and this is, um. Off of, sort of off to the west of, um, Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. Where there is, um. Kind of in the map on the middle, you can see the. It's kind of a hodgepodge of different zones where you have. Neighborhood business, which is basically the equivalent to the CD four zone today in terms of, uh, density. Um, and, uh. What you can do on the site with the, the, to the east is. Uh, that's kind of starting into the Sono two TOD district. Um, to the west is two-family zone. And to the north is the D residence, which is the multifamily. Um, looking at the map on the right, there's quite a bit of. Different things going on there in terms of, there's a bunch of multifamily, there's two-family, there's single-family. Given that area's proximity, uh, to the train station. Considering the uses that are existing today and what's kind of surrounding it. It, it, it's a good area to add a little bit, a little bit more density. Without, um, making it inconsistent with what's going on currently, especially given its proximity to the train station. So that's the, kind of the. Overarching reasons for the recommendation in that area.
One question, Mike here. Steve and the CD four. Uh, do we have any restrictions on the, uh? Just refresh my memory because I'm, it's, there's so many facts in the, uh, update. On the, uh, maximum lot width. The only thing I'd be concerned about in that neighborhood is there are, uh, quite a few historic homes, the, um. You know, the, the fabric of the. Of the neighborhood is historic. It's not, it's not a listed historic district. Uh, like Golden Hill is, uh, which is a state historic district. You know, based on the number of historic homes that are still, that are preserved. And which was a concern about going to CD four. But in this neighborhood, what, what would prevent someone? Or what is the maximum number of lots that could be assembled? For a larger, uh, multifamily?
Uh, it's CD four maximum is a hundred. That, that's, uh. That's kind of the point I was, the one thing I wanted to take a, a further look at with the CD four itself is making sure you're not going to. Kind of wholesale change things. And the lot width requirement relates to that. So that's one thing I'm going to circle back on before we talk about the maps again.
And that was a hundred, you said?
Correct, yeah, minimum fifty, max one hundred.
Uh, so it'd be two lots, uh. If, if it was a, if there were a fifty-foot lot, we must, you know, almost all their homes are going to be. And, and so the larger houses are going to be larger than fifty.
Yeah, well, I think the bigger factor with the, is not the width, but the depth of the lot. Because if, if it's a one-hundred-foot lot and it's fifty-foot wide or it's a hundred-foot wide, the density's not going to be there, but if it's a. Like, if it's a two-hundred-foot lot with depth, then you're going to get a lot more density out of it. So that'll be the, we'll, we'll take another look at that, though. It's a good point. We'll, we'll. Analyze the properties in this area just to confirm.
Uh, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, let's go to the next map.
I think we're getting close, Mr. Chairman, to the end of the line here, so.
Yeah, I think just one more after this.
Yeah, one more after this.
Page fifteen.
Right, thi- this area is off of New Canaan Ave, um. I would make a change just based on what I saw yesterday, that northern. Part, uh, north of Vale, I would revert that back to the B-zone, uh, or leave it as a single-family zone. And not put it into the two. I think it just, looking at it yesterday, it made more sense. It just, much different feel, but I would recommend the area, um. Where Harris is and in between Harris and Mills and. Put that into the CD three, because if you go out there, um. Those streets are almost identical. They're almost, they're mirror images, mirror images of each other in terms of the. Configuration of the lots. Uh, and I think, you know, it's, it's odd to go from. Uh, multifamily to single-family to two-family back to single. So it would make sense if it was multi to two to single.
Okay, so what you're talking about is the arrow point at the top?
Yeah, taking that out. And then leaving the bottom one where Harris is.
Right.
CD three.
Down a second, so we can see the labels on, I don't know what they are, but the puff. Uh, the right there, proposed existing, thank you. We couldn't see those, uh, tops of the maps and, um, the way you had it. Thanks.
Well, that's, um, very near my neighborhood. I know that, uh, area well. And, um, I think your suggestion to take that out does make sense.
And the last area, oh, yeah, Wolf Pit. There was a, I think an error on the map, which is circled with that red circle, which I don't think those should have been included in the upzoning to begin with. So I think that's what just flagged. Um, this is just a weird area in terms of the way it developed over time. And I think this was part of, you know, you know, when they were doing the PRDs, so you have a ton of these PRD. And I think this was part of, you know, you know, when they were doing the P R Ds. So you have a ton of these P R Ds and. Um, you know, Dreamy Hollows over there. There's a bunch of different things going on where you go from. Multifamily to single, and then you're right next to, uh, Westport Ave. It's. It's an odd area, so I think that the intention with the map is to just to try to. Clean it up. Provide some gradation of density over time. Um, but I'm open to discussion and suggestion from the commission on it for sure.
Did you just in the existing zoning, what is that red line that's running through the word Wolf Pit? Is that a mistake as well as the circle? What?
No, so the this red line, Tammy, is just however the G I S layer was created. For some reason, they put a line. Like, so this is. A B residence zone layer, and then this is a B residence only for some reason, it's just not merged together. So it's. It shouldn't be there, but it kind of is what it is.
Okay, and what are what are you all suggesting that that whole that blue area, the circle roughly is go to C D four?
Correct. So if you keep the map on the right.
Yeah.
That's aligned with the lot there.
For the most part, yeah, there are some single families in there. So that's like the reason why it's. I don't know how many there are, probably. Ten or so. Fifteen maybe. But it's kind of surrounded by it and it's it's so. It's an odd way it just developed over time, I think.
But then you're kind of expanding the post-road business into that residential neighborhood just because they're condo complexes.
So there wouldn't be the commercial aspect so much, but you would be potentially. So what could happen, um? If you look at, um, Brian, if you could zoom in on the map on the right.
I mean, I'm familiar with the area.
So if you just scroll up a little bit. Yeah, thank you. I can't read the number, but if you go to parcel above number, so where number seventy five through sixty seven is.
Yep.
Potentially what could happen is somebody maybe over time. Buys all those and then. Puts up, you know, takes down the single families and adds multis in there. That, I mean, that that's a. I'm not gonna try to sugarcoat it. It's a distinct possibility over time. But again, you have four separate parcels with four separate owners and they'd all have to agree to do it. So it's not not somebody's good is gonna take the property.
Yeah.
There are, uh, while you're zoomed in there, sorry, uh, on the south side of Wolf Pit, uh, I'd like properties thirty six forty two. And there's one where that's unlabeled to the left, I presume it'd be thirty four, uh. Those seem to be in four C. Does it make sense to move those towards, uh, C D four instead?
Yeah, I don't think it would make a difference, um, from. Density standpoint. So you wouldn't be like making anything not conforming at that point. So, yeah.
Yeah, just that way they remain residential, not commercial, yeah.
If you do that, you're kind of ruining. The people that live. Behind the strawberry wood, not strawberry wood, whatever that other complex is called, one, two, three, four, five, six lots sort of. Going south below the word Wolf Pit. Because what's gonna happen to them? I mean, then they're gonna be like in no man's land. Um, no, up more toward the center, like forty, I can't read if that says forty one.
Is that a response to what I raised, or is that something?
Yeah. Um, both. Like, from nine, I'm sorry, from forty nine up to sixty one Wolf Pit. They're all single family houses that are, they probably sold off that whole big lot in the back to get those condominiums in there years ago. But Steve, you're suggesting that. Maybe somebody would come along and buy those and the other little piano key ones that back up to Mark Drive. And put more.
It's it's possible. So it it, you know, I I that that's the. Potential reality of so if if you do the upzoning to that, so I don't want to. Try to mislead you and say that's not gonna happen. It's it's a definite possibility. But again. Assuming those are all, um. Owner occupied units, each one of those owners would have to agree and more than likely, if if somebody was looking to develop that. The developer is gonna make it worth their while to do it. So there would, I'm assuming, you know. It's not a taking, it's probably a financial incentive for them to do it. So it's just something. That I would say the hat you should or lens you should be looking at it is is the long term view of the city. Does it make sense to? Have, um, you know, make that more consistent in terms of the the land use type in that area.
I'm not sure that I fully understood what Bryce was saying. Just before Tammy commented.
So these three, uh, sorry.
Yeah, sure, just to clarify real quick. These three are marked as commercial, sorry. Those three are marked as a four C commercial right now, and I'm advocating that they aren't marked as four C. They're instead marked as C D four, so that they aren't, uh, marked as possible for a commercial on Wolf Pit.
That seems to make sense. Steve, would that make sense? Is there any reason not to do that?
So, you know, I I. I don't see a reason why not.
Does one of those have, one of them is an apartment building? Does it have? Access to the businesses like for their trash pickup or something on. Can Westport Avenue? I think it's, yeah, the purple one is the it's a apartment rental building, I'm pretty sure.
I think it's all on Wolf Pit.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I live over on Warthorn Drive right there and I walk it off. I'm pretty sure it just is Wolf Pit is access there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, for my perspective, bottom line question. Um, are we comfortable? Um, accepting this as our new starting point? Again, given the fact that we can add or subtract. But, um, in order to bring us a little closer. Uh, to, uh, uh, approving at some point a map. Um, that we're all comfortable with. Are we? As a group. Comfortable with this as our starting point? See, I I see Chapin shaking or I don't know if that's nodding or shaking. But I but I it looks like it's an affirmative movement.
Correct, yeah, I think this is a a good and argued, um, improvement to the map. Um, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had, but, um, I think. We also need a good starting point to look at the regulations as well. So as we're thinking about what belongs in, say, C D three. We also have a map that we can refer back to, um, and make those thoughts, yeah.
Yeah, Tammy?
I I think it's a good starting point. I like. Like I said before, I like the three map thing and the dialogue that, um, staff put together. I think that will help residents understand it if this goes public. Or when this goes public.
Nick?
Yes, I I think ultimately it's a good. A good starting point. I think like what other folks have said, there's definitely room to. Um. Work on, especially in, you know, the fact that we pulled a lot of zoning or upzoning out. I really want us to think about the urban core and how to. Really make that as, um. Useful, walkable, really engaging for folks and really make that awesome. Uh, we talked about climate change, we talked about global warming, we talked about solar often, but the other thing also that we have is, you know, we're responsible for land uses. Getting people out of their cars, reducing that, uh, you know, our addiction to that. Uh, and I think we we're in a good start place to start having those real conversations. So I appreciate all the work here.
Anna?
Um, yeah, I find what this is the new. Starting place. I appreciate it. I, um. And so we're sort of adding comments, um, to piggyback on what Nick said. I also want to keep in mind, uh, because I think in the public. Dialogue, we can hear a lot about how. The goals of this rewrite are to get people to give up their cars or, um. Uh, particularly with like the ideas of like, oh, you could walk to work if you lived at the hospital. Um, my understanding of. Of. The goals for transit and employment and commercial oriented development is to make it so that we. Don't so that we can use our cars. Fewer days of the week for fewer hours, for fewer miles. But not necessarily that we would give them up just to have more options so that like right now, oh, my God. So I no longer have to drive to Westport to get a dozen bagels because U B C, whatever it is, just opened on First Avenue last week. And like. That's great for me. That's great for my health. That's great for the environment. It doesn't mean I'm giving up my car. But I appreciate the new bagel place.
I don't care for their bagels, frankly, but that's just my opinion. Mike?
Lou, do you get them shipped in from Brooklyn every week?
No, 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 no.
Baker's dozen, some lox capers and some cream cheese.
I got a, we got a place right down on Main Street. Uh, Mike?
Um. Well, I had spoken previously about, you know, not being comfortable with. The upzoning in general. Um. For reasons, uh, that. You know, were based on the experience I've had in my neighborhood. So. I do want to hear more commitment on the city side to enforcement. Uh, before proceeding, and I think we're we're heading that way, which is, uh. Uh, I hope we are. Uh. Because that's a really big issue, and I think that's really important. Uh, I. You know, obviously, we're in in a housing crisis. There's no question. Uh, I think Norwalk is. Not turning into Stanford as some people are suggesting. And we're actually growing at the same rate currently. That, and this is, you know, general, not not specific to this map change. But in general, I wanted to just put this in the record that. We're not turning into Stanford. We are growing at a rate that is a healthy rate of, uh. You know, it was six point five percent in the last decade. Uh, and since this decade up to two thousand twenty. And, uh. And that compares as a low rate of growth in the history of the city. Uh, we have to continue to grow. If we stop growing, we're gonna drive everybody out. Because prices are gonna go through the roof. And, uh, we're gonna drive out, especially the middle class and lower income folks. So, uh. You know, I don't think that we're growing too fast. It looks like we are because we are building, we're correcting the mistakes of the past. Is the way I see it. You know, we are building, we're rebuilding our downtowns. To me, that's where density makes sense. I have felt that, you know, increasing density in neighborhoods was. Unnecessary in some of the residential neighborhoods, most of them. But I see that the staff has really done a good job of justifying. The current map. In terms of bringing a lot of properties into conformity. Uh, cleaning up zones that, um. That didn't really make a lot of sense. Uh, and. Uh, and adding the missing middle housing that organizations like E N and A have been calling for for years, demanding actually. So, um, so I think that I would hope that E N and A is satisfied with. Uh, the missing middle housing that some of this, uh, upzoning does provide. Uh, since they've been calling for it for years. And, um. And I and so I think this is a good starting point, uh, and the, uh, and I. And I want to commend staffer. Uh. You know. Responding to. What they've been hearing, uh, from this commission, from the public. Uh, and, uh, doing a very good job. I know that some of the pullback is not been popular with some of the commission members here, obviously. But. Uh, I I think that the A D U law provided. Or provides. An increase in density, and we should just give that some chance. And I didn't, and I did think that we needed to find some consensus. And I think this is a good step. Uh, uh, in that direction. Uh, so, uh, I I think that's. Um, but we are not turning into Stanford. I'll make that point. We aren't building thirty story apartment buildings. And we aren't wiping out entire neighborhoods like Stanford had had done. We did one, Reed Putnam. Was a mistake, and that was left over from the sixties. Uh, remember where Maritime, where the mall is, uh, that was one. Really bad example of, uh, uh, I mean, I'm happy with the mall. It's three thousand jobs. And I think all that has worked better than even people imagine that we're supporting it, including me. But, uh, the. The loss of that neighborhood is still a sore spot in my. Uh. Thought process of the history of Norwalk, you know, uh, uh, an old historic neighborhood. Uh, but that is in the past. That's never gonna happen again. And, um, the overall. Concept that we have here is to, uh, to avoid turning into Stanford. And to grow at a. Healthy rate. Uh, which is what we are doing right now. So I think that's all good. That's about all I can say.
I miss the hardware store. Um, Richard?
I made the comment several weeks ago that I was against upzoning period. Um, and I primarily did that to start the conversation. But I I I have to say I was astounded when I read. The memos and looked at the maps because, you know, for the first time during all of this, it. What was happening became clear. So I think this is a a great starting point, and I commend Steve and Brian and. Everybody else who worked on this to for making it so clear.
Thank you. Galen?
That means it was really, really unclear before.
It was to me. I mean, just being able to blow the map up and see a street name is is fantastic.
You're muted, Galen, sorry.
Well, don't be sorry. Thank you for telling me. Otherwise, I'd just be sitting here, you know, and you could say, okay, and move on. You wouldn't have to listen to a word. Um, I think this is a one, a very good place to start. I really do, uh. I think some upzoning is is necessary, and I think this. Approach in this new map makes sense.
Okay.
So. I'm happy.
Thank you. JJ?
Hi, last but not least, huh? So, um, oh, no, Tammy, did you get a chance to speak on it? Okay, so, um, um. As I echo everyone's, um, comment about a good place to start, but I also wanted to put on the table something that. Has not been broadly discussed, but I hope that will. Um, entice further discussion, and that is. Bringing new businesses to Norwalk. And small businesses to support these growing neighborhoods. I mean, it's something that Norwalk needs, is something that everyone can benefit from. Um, the fact that we are doing it in incremental steps. Um, shows that we are not, we don't have this blind spot about what other people want and need and screaming for. We we hear them. Um, we are implementing these these changes. Um, in a way that is not going to overburden any one neighborhood. It's kind of spread out in in ways that is easily digestible. And at the same time is. Is not just the benefit of the people who are already here, but for those who are going to come. And can enjoy our beautiful city. And, um, you know, with these businesses, it will attract. Large businesses and small businesses, especially the type of small business that can, um. Complement these new neighborhoods. You know, a dry cleaner, um, you know, um, an ice cream store, a shoe, um, a shoe repair shop. Um, you know, um, small, small retail. And, um, that's going to, that's going to, um, benefit everyone and make these neighborhoods livable. And, um, hopefully, you know, it will. You know, make Norwalk, you know, the 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 star of Fairfield County.
Thank you, JJ. Steve, uh, looks as if, um, you've got your marching orders, uh, on this. Um. Uh, I'd like to move on to something else, uh, which may be a little less. Popular. I think that, um, this has been, um, a a great conversation tonight. Um, and it took us just about two hours. Um, but we still.
Change.
We still, we still have a long way to go. Um. I I'd like to get just. Some feedback on the possibility. Of adding. Two more meetings. In September, which would mean we would meet every Wednesday in September. And. The purpose of those meetings. We're 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 not going to be in a position by then, it seems to me, uh, to. Uh, discuss the map. But we should be in a position. Uh, to start addressing some of the other issues in the zoning regulations themselves. Um, I also think that if it's not possible. For everyone to be at every meeting. Since we're talking about four meetings, uh, in a row. Uh, that if you miss a meeting. If we limit the meetings to two hours. Um, it should be reasonably easy. it should be reasonably easy for you to watch the tape and follow, follow along. So you're, you're not left behind. And in, again, in, in, in order to move the process forward, and Steve is confident that he and the staff can organize the discussions around the new zoning regulations that we can, again, continue the forward process and the progress that we've made this evening. So if you can all tolerate that, and I'll, I'll also mention, I mean, I'm concerned about whether it interferes, for example, with Jewish holidays and the two dates, which is September thirteenth and twenty seventh, do not. So there, there shouldn't be any religious reasons not to attend the meetings.
I'm taking a vacation. So does that count? Can I? I won't have any internet service.
Sounds like a nice vacation.
Oh, my God, where are you going?
So you'll miss, so you'll miss a meeting, you'll miss a meeting or two, and you can at your convenience, watch the video.
Lou, does that mean we're not having more extra meetings in August?
Our August schedule is set. We have a meeting next week when I will be on vacation. But I have permission, grudging permission from the family to participate nonetheless. Uh, and that is our last meeting in August.
Yeah.
Next week.
You have the ability to add an extra meeting at any juncture, but it's up to you. I don't, I'm not. I think it's, I, I mean, I think was we, we, we saw last week, it's just in based on what I see coming down for just normal business with applications, you're not going to have the ability at the end of your meetings to have anything meaningful discussion wise, I don't think. What Brian and I are working on now, we just started making some progress today, or all these kind of sides, specific issues that came in as part of this, like you heard from somebody about the Harbor Ave property and should that be concluded? Fifty seven Chestnut Street, should that be included in a different zone? So we're looking at those memos. We're going to put our own kind of companion memo with that, with a recommendation. And hopefully it's clear. And if you're agreeable, then you can have a short discussion if you need a discussion on that. And then that checks the box on that item. We have to have a sustainability discussion. I mentioned the enforcement one. So those are all not something you're going to want to do at the end of your, one of your regular meetings. I just don't.
Exactly. So these meetings will start at six and end at eight.
And all Anna is asking is, do we want to pull one another, like, do we want?
I thought they were going to be in August. I'm fine with doing either or both. I was just confused.
You can do them as often as you guys can tolerate it. So it's, it's your, your decision.
But is it just the zoning rewrites? Or are you?
These are for the special meetings, yes. I mean, next week, next week, we have a regular agenda with a, a public hearing or public hearings. I forget which. But those, those two meetings on the thirteenth and the twenty seventh will be dedicated to the zoning regulations exclusively.
Yeah, hopefully we don't get, like, tonight, we didn't anticipate the aquifer issue coming up, but it came up. So there's sometimes it's just, you know, we might get something from finance or DPW where they've got to act within twenty days and our hands are a little bit tied with that, but we'll try to keep the agendas clean.
Would we have had a special meeting called for the aquifer thing if we didn't already have this one scheduled tonight? Or would that have been added to next week's meeting?
I think we were going to go that route anyway. I'll double check with Alexis, but I think that's what she was.
I think from talking with her, she, when she sends an order out, she has a certain deadline in which you, they need to appear before you. And we happen to have this meeting, so as early as she could send it out and get on an agenda.
I think we should meet as often as we need to, but I think it needs to be just that.
Let's do it. Let's, let's, let's address it on a, a month to month basis.
I, so let me just say, the sixth, I will not be able to make, I'm going to be on this vineyard with no internet access. So, uh, I'm going to be in an old house specifically off the grid. Uh, because I just want to be away from everything. So
But that, but that, Mike, is a regular, is a regular meeting.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to, I was going to suggest that forfeiting the sixth, if somebody else couldn't make it, I'm not sure what Jay, what week JJ couldn't make it. If that was the same week, I was going to say, well, there's two people that couldn't make this. That's the day, that's Labor Day week. So, all right, I'll, I'll be missing that meeting anyway. Yeah, there's the, the Chestnut Street public hearing is on that date. That's what they've got scheduled, so.
I think it's a good idea to have special meetings for this because when you put it at the end of other meetings, by the time it comes up, I am so frazzled that I don't want to hear it. You know what I mean? But if it's a special meeting where we're talking about the zoning rewrite, we can all focus. It's two hours. I think it's a brilliant idea.
Okay, good.
I like the proposal for September as well. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Steve, any comments?
No, and again, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. If you wanted to meet later. The baby's crying. I made the baby cry. If you wanted to meet later this month on a Wednesday, that is up to you entirely. So I'll.
Let's talk, let's talk, we can talk about that next week.
Okay.
Okay. Comments of commissioners? Anyone else have something to say?
I do.
Go ahead, Richard.
This is about the aquifer meeting.
Yes.
I, I would like to volunteer as a committee of one, even though I would be in R talking to fourteen Ds, I would love to go to the common council and see if they can do something about putting some teeth in the aquifer regulations. And, and the other thing is that that area is probably going to be the last major stronghold of, of industrial area. And it's just staggering for me to believe that a fix for a chemical plant is to put covers over the dry wells and then pump the residue into the Norwalk River. I mean, that's unbelievable to me. Although I guess it's better than, than drinking it.
Richard, let's let, let's let Alexis do her research. See if she can find out if there are other tools available.
Well, she already said that, that the common council, I, I, whatever, that's, okay.
No, I mean, if, you know, if, for example, if the city of Stanford has a better way of addressing this, we may, you, you can take that to the common council.
Well, not every town has an aquifer the size that we have with an industrial park on top of it.
No, that's true.
Well, that may be just something for the rewrite where we know, just something for a future conversation is looking at the aquifer overlay and what we're allowing within it. And maybe what do we want to change as a result of that? Too. And I'm totally with you, Richard, on council, putting some teeth in that because it's sort of just astounding that.
But it's outrageous that, that in effect, we can't hold people responsible.
Can we make referrals to someone who can?
Well, that's a good point.
I think Alexis is going to, she mentioned, but we should stay on it.
But I see the regulations do have mentioned fines and, and possible jail time as well, but it was unclear who could actually have standing to bring such a, such a case.
Richard, you're so pointed. And if anybody wants to work, work with, work with Richard, I'd be happy to have more than just a committee of one.
I'll, I'll help you, Richard. I think I'm pretty involved too.
Yeah, I'm happy to help.
Who was that? I couldn't tell.
Tammy.
That was Tammy. So if, if you will, Richard, Richard will chair. Okay.
And Chapin raised his hand as well. Don't.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you both for that.
If you need it.
No, your statement earlier, Richard, was very effective by just stating that you're you're drinking results. They're doing.
Couldn't help it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to ask two questions if I could.
Yeah.
Steve, so the first one, I think this is just, I hope it's sort of a simple yes or no question. Given that we have regulations that houses that have ADUs detached or attached have to be owner occupied and do the annual attestation. Is it possible? It may or may not be advisable, but would it be possible for us to require the same of two family houses? That's my first question.
That was a question I think was asked earlier. I'm pretty sure the answer is no. I'll double check the response we got from our attorney on that, though.
Thank you. And then the second question, because I know this is, I think part of every rate as well, hopefully, is when is the affordable housing group study? When is the, when is that all going to start?
So they're kind of doing a little bit of work now. It doesn't going to kick off in earnest until next month. Should wrap up early twenty four.
Okay, do you think we'll know the results of that in to be able to make edits to that section of the regulations in the rewrite? Or would that have to wait?
Uh, you know, it's very possible. It's possible. We might know the recommendation is close to that point.
Okay, thank you so much.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
JJ has moved and Nick is seconding. All those in favor? We are adjourned. See you all next week.
Thanks for your time. Thank you all.